Tuesday, and May 17, 2022, I called this regular meeting to order at 6:40 PM. A pledge allegiance led by Vice Mayor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll a call. Priest?
Mayor Ding.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Close the session report. Our city attorney will be now give the closed session report from the special meeting hold on today at 5:30 PM.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and what I have to report tonight is that we were not able to finish with the special meeting that took place prior to this meeting, and so that meeting has been adjourned until after the public meeting, which means that I will be reporting on the closed session items at the next meeting. That concludes the report, or not report.
Okay. Thank you. We will now have some announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the assistant city clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Okay. First item, approve of the agenda order. Are there any objection for the agenda order? None. The agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentation, proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Councilmember Rivera will make the presentation.
I think it really short. In honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, we asked Mayor Tony Ding to make a proclamation for mental health awareness for the city. And thank you, Mayor, for agreeing. This month, we pronounce our commitment to writing our society of the stigma associated with mental health by encouraging those living with mental health conditions to get the help that they need. And above all, let us ensure that all children, adults, experiencing mental health challenges are treated with the compassion, respect, and understanding that they deserve. Each of us has an important role to play in fighting the prejudice and negative attitudes that discourages those in need from seeking mental health support, along with advocacy for early and effective treatment so those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead productive lives. Just want to let the residents know that the council and I are very dedicated to bringing mental health awareness to our city, taking baby steps and doing so, encouraging other people to do so too. And I would like to just thank everybody that's been involved and everybody that has helped us bring this awareness to our city. There are more great things to come. I know that there's a mental health awareness fair that's coming up sometime soon. And we would like to invite everybody to participate in any way that they can because this is important not only for youth, but for us as parents and adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Yeah, actually, for the mental health, I know that this whole community, they're very care of the issue. And yeah, as a mayor, I really like try approach. We can use, I glad we have the local, like a nonprofit organization, like Chinatown Service Center, AYC. Also have the Hero, the Christian Center, the medical center. But also have chance talk to the, like, our governor Newsom, the representative regarding that issue too. And that talk to the, our local, like a microphone to assembly regarding this mental issue. Actually, and also I have chance talk to the county here stories. Hopefully, that the all the top level, the government to help our local city have like, they can establish like a mental health center or professional service for help our city. So if anything, especially our, like, law enforcement go out and find that this one, they have the, we can have the good backup, the support. So I, yeah, I for the council, I really I got to support all the council agree. I have chance talk to them, but also it's really want to hear about it, like, community, the member. Also have to, if you have more requests, I have to more power to talk to the federal state and the legislature to help us. Okay, thank you.
I also want to say thank you to the fire department for allowing us to bring LA County Mental Health Services to their fire service day. We had, although it was like really hot that day, they stood out and they were there, went through different languages. We had Spanish, Taiwanese, and English representatives from LA County that were there. So thank you for the fire department too for taking care of them and for allowing them to be there that day and share. There was a lot of information they gave out. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. But also I have chance, I think with the council member Wu, with the Chinatown Service Center, they say they also can help us to asking some grant from our state to help the mental service.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully, the city staff and my, to let the, like, fire department. They, actually, these grants for the police department and the fire department, both department have chance to get it. So, yeah, we try working with the Chinatown Service Center because they say they need a nonprofit organization to support it and plus the state to have some grant. Yeah. Thank you.
I want to share with everybody their proclamation.
Okay, all right. So, should I take a photo?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. We have no email comments this evening, and our first speaker is Sue Fitzsimmons.
I'm Sue Fitzsimmons, Mayor Ding, City Council. Good evening. I am here to give a shout out to the fire department for their fire day that they had on Saturday. It was quite a wonderful event. It was nice to be back. I want to thank Chief Wallace, Captain Negrete, Murphy, Davis, and all the fire people because they worked very, very hard putting this all together, doing demonstrations despite it being so very, very, very hot. They took good care of us. I want to thank Chief Wallace for asking me to attend in behalf of the police department and our wonderful K-9 unit. We all worked together as a family, so we were more than happy to come and to be a part of this wonderful event. The other thing that I want to bring up is the CERT program that is put on by the fire department. This program, I think it's very, very important that the city council members, if you have not attended a CERT program, I really, really encourage you to do so, as well as all the city residents. If, not when, a major disaster should occur, such as an earthquake, we are on our own. Fire will not be there to help us. They will be very, very busy doing other things. So it's up to us as residents to know how to take care of ourselves. With the CERT program, they teach and they train in order to how to take care of not only yourself and to survive, but your family and your neighbors. This is very, very important because in a major disaster, if you have no water, you have no power, you have no gas, what are you going to do? So we all need to be prepared because this is going to happen. And when the training occurs, I encourage each and every one of you, it is a few weeks, but it's well worth it. And I ask you, isn't it worth it to save your families? Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean Rea.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and staff, everybody, voters, people in the audience. A couple of weeks, or maybe it wasn't that long ago, I attended Councilmember Harrington's community meeting. And I would like to applaud him for proposing that there be a candidate forum open to the public and to include all candidates for the November election. However, I think probably due to some misinformation, Member Harrington thought that the League of Women Voters would not moderate a forum. The League of Women Voters is available. That's what they do. They will moderate. They will not sponsor. Somebody else has to sponsor. They need at least four weeks' notice, which is why I'm speaking tonight, so that you have plenty of time to think about this. I believe that the city should sponsor a forum in the interest of impartiality and transparency so that voters in our city can be well informed, have an opportunity to see all candidates, and perhaps increase voter participation in the city. The city has venues and can livestream. The league can be contacted via email, and I'd be happy to share that with whomever is the appropriate contact. If that would be Mr. Lazaretto, I will do so. So I'm requesting that you please consider this and notify, begin notifying residents as soon as possible so that if this does come to pass, there would be maximum participation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Good evening. I'm Chastity Jennings Nunez, and OBGYN, and resident of San Gabriel. On the morning of Saturday, May 14th, I was surrounded by angry, passionate, energized people of various races, genders, and sexual identities as we came together with millions around the country in solidarity and common purpose to tell Republican lawmakers, the Supreme Court, and anyone else who would listen that we will not go back to a time when others controlled our bodies. We chanted in unison that we would not go back to a time when access to a medical procedure, one that is a personal decision and no one's business beyond the person making it and the medical provider, is no longer legal and therefore carries risk to a woman's physical and mental health that are unnecessary and avoidable. We held signs and listened to speeches and planned for action. My plan was to offer a public comment today about my desire and intent for the city council to pass a resolution like Alhambra, Pasadena, and other cities designating San Gabriel a reproductive freedom city. Then I heard on the news that 10 people had been killed by a white supremacist intent on terrorizing a community. He drove over 200 miles to specifically target a black community and carry out his racist, hate-filled plan to kill as many black people as possible. I am not a lawyer, so I don't have to wait for the judicial system to review his 180-page manifesto filled with white supremacist conspiracy theories and racist rants or see the 30-second live feed he streamed as he gunned down innocent people with the N-word carved into the gun barrel of his automatic weapon. This was a hate crime, and he is a racist murderer. I don't know what you have felt this week, but I've been angry, sad, frustrated, disappointed, and hopeless, all in the space of a few hours, only to start the cycle over again. This isn't the first time, and unfortunately won't be the last, given the cancer of white supremacy ideology that is growing. For right now, though, I want to be respectful and thoughtful and take a moment to remember the people who were taken from their families and communities by this man. Celestine Cheney, Roberta Drury, Catherine Macy, Andre McNeil, Margis Morrison, Hayward Patterson, Erin Salter, Geraldine Tally, Pearl Young, and Ruth Whitfield. These were real grandmothers, mothers, fathers, brothers, sons, daughters, sisters, and loved ones. And we should remember the courage and strength that lives on to honor their memory. Thank you.
We have no additional speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
Okay. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. Staff request that the consent calendar be considered with two corrections as follows. Item 4F, agreement extension with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, a correction to the term of the contract in section one of the agreement for a contract period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023, and item 4J, fire apparatus lease agreement with a corrected resolution number of 22-25. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Is there any council member? Would I have any kind of pull out another item from the separate discussion?
No.
No, okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the amendments.
Okay. Motion made by the council member Minchaca and second by the Vice Mayor Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
We have no public hearings this evening. Our next item is Continued Business, item A, fee structure and policy for use of outdoor spaces in the Mission District. Community Services Director Perez will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Ding and members of the city council. At the March 1st city council meeting, staff brought forward an item indicating that there have been various requests for use of the outdoor spaces in the Mission District, including the Mission Playhouse Plaza, Playhouse Parking Lot, and Mission Drive. In general, the city council expressed support for these auxiliary uses as long as they do not conflict with use of the Mission Playhouse or Adult Recreation Center, which are key rental venues for the city. With this report, staff is bringing forward a proposed fee structure and policy for use of these outdoor spaces. Staff recommends that the city council review and discuss the proposed fees and policy, and if in agreement, move to approve the item with fees to be included as part of the upcoming fiscal year 2223 budget. For any requested uses of these spaces prior to the start of the new fiscal year, staff recommends that the fees in the current fee schedule apply to these requests. In this case, the fee for the parking lot is included as a per-space fee of $12 for a total of $2,088. And the Mission Playhouse Plaza is included as an auxiliary space at $450. The proposed fees included in your report for the Playhouse Parking Lot and Plaza are lower for groups that offer free events and that are open to the community as opposed to those that charge an entry fee or are making a profit. Additionally, staff has proposed a higher fee for groups that are looking to reserve the parking lot or plaza more than 60 days in advance. Though the space may be available when they make the reservation, this may prevent the city from renting out the Playhouse or Adult Recreation Center to another customer. If the request for use is closer to the event, such as one to two months, and the Playhouse or Adult Center has not yet been rented for that time, there's a probability that it will not be booked and the lot would be available for outside use. The proposed fees do not include any staff time, access to restrooms, or other spaces. If these additional items are requested, they would be charged separately according to the established fee schedule. Also, if the rental includes the engagement of businesses, then a business license fee will also be included. Staff recommends that any requests for use of the parking lot and Plaza be reviewed and approved at a staff level. For a street closure requested by an outside user group, the proposed fee includes staff time to process the application and covers the general street closure and personnel cost for this type of event. Any requests for street closures by outside user groups would be submitted through the temporary use permit, or TUP, process, and then would be presented as a staff report to the city council for review and approval. The cost proposed in the report is recommended as a starting fee. Should the request be for several days or require additional personnel, staff would recommend an increased fee at the time of council review. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council review this report and the fee recommendations, and if approved, include these fees as part of the fiscal year 2223 fee schedule. The fees will be reviewed and approved as part of the public hearing process for the fee schedule. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does any council member have the factual question for staff and to clarify the report? Okay, council member Rivera.
On the parking lot rental buyout, that's just for like if there's a show or something, right? It's not for them to like bring an event to the parking lot?
Right. So if they are renting the theater and a client chooses to rent the parking lot so that their guests do not have to pay, then they can also buy out the parking lot.
Do we have anything for the, for an event at the parking lot, if we wanted to do that?
So that would be the proposed fees there. So the parking lot events booked, there's the 60-plus days in advance, and there's a different event. So if it's a free community event, it would be that event. So the buyout, though, would just be if they are also proposing a show.
So that would be the Plaza events?
So the parking lot events would be those two fees that are listed there, and then the Plaza events are down below.
How many hours would that be?
We have not set a time on that. Typically, though, it would be limited to one event per day. We don't typically do like a morning event and an evening event. We have not done that in the past, just because of kind of the turnover time.
Thank you.
If not, it's the chief city clerk. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have one comment card. It is from Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Okay.
Comment. So, thank you. Tonight, you're considering the fee structure and policy for the use of outdoor spaces in the Mission District. For city-owned rental facility properties like the Grapevine Arbor and the Adult Recreation Center, there are two categories for the fee structure, resident and non-resident. Since the maintenance and function of all city-owned facilities, but especially that of the Mission Playhouse, are heavily subsidized by general budget funding, and since over a third of the revenue for the general fund comes from property and sales taxes, the residents of San Gabriel are already contributing to these facilities. Please consider designating a separate fee structure for residents and for designated local nonprofits who request to use these areas. If it is necessary to restrict them to reserving no more than 60 days in advance, I think that is reasonable and allows for those large professional entities to continue to have priority since they often reserve spaces months to a year in advance. I guess my biggest concern is for local organizations like Compassion San Gabriel Valley. If we wanted to have a small rally out in front in the Plaza that they've done before, that the fees are not exorbitant or prohibitive for those types of small and very short uses by local residents or by local nonprofits. Thank you.
Okay. So it's now time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who would we like to study? Councilmember Minchaca.
Just real briefly, Rebecca, what has been the policy in the past when you do have residents who want to rent? The Mission, because we're focused just on the Mission Playhouse right now, the Mission Playhouse and the parking lot. Is there, has there been a different fee structure for residents versus non-residents? Because I know for the Grapevine Arbor, for example, the Quandals Club, we've used that, Historical Association has used that. Those have always been different. But for these bigger venues, have we ever separated them?
We've not. We've not had a fee structure specific for those, for those locations. What I would say, though, is that these areas really do impact both facilities. So they impact the Playhouse, but they also impact the Adult Recreation Center. As you know, the close proximity of those, of those facilities and those venues is, is, makes essentially the use of the Plaza be prohibitive for the Adult Recreation Center. So if the council is interested in looking at a, a city resident fee or a smaller group fee, I would like to have there be a distinction between a nonprofit that is charging fees because there could be nonprofits that are also selling items, and, and I think an event that sells items is potentially a different event than just a community function. And so obviously, a nonprofit can, can still come out and sell merchandise or kind of create it as a fundraiser. And so I think there is a difference with those, those types of items. But it, so to answer your question, no, we don't really have a separate fee at this, at this time. We don't have a resident fee for the Playhouse. We do have one for the Adult Recreation Center, but we don't have one for the Playhouse.
I'm just going to say that I think for now, since this is all new, I'm comfortable as is. Maybe later down the road, we can reevaluate. But I know the Mission Playhouse in particular, we've been very mindful, the fact that we need to have revenue. I mean, we need to make this at least break even, and we haven't. And so the nonprofits that I just mentioned and nonprofits that I know about, they've always been comfortable with the Adult Recreation Center or the Grapevine or our parks. And so for me, I'm comfortable with what you have here for now, but I just wanted to ask the question. And my second question was temporary use permit checklist. I'm just wondering, in the past, I know some people have kind of commented that it's a little difficult to kind of go through the process. So if there are questions, I'm assuming they can just use the phone number that's listed there. Is there any kind of like tutorial or anything they can just go to and just, if they don't want to make the phone call? Just, is there something available for them to help them? Or is it just, they have a question, they'll get back to you? Because there's a lot here.
Right. Staff is always available to help. And, and if the council desires for us to make kind of a more user-friendly form, format for that, we can do that as well. Obviously, the temporary use permit is something that is utilized for broader-scale events and not even events specifically, but broader-scale functions as well. And so we could, we could make a more user-friendly form. The thing the temporary use permit allows is allows that to be routed to multiple departments. So for example, if, if the parking lot closure is happening, potentially that needs to be routed to police, fire, public works, depending on what the needs are because oftentimes that impacts traffic concerns and allows those departments to review that. So that's really where that application comes in and the reason that that was suggested, because that's how that form's used.
Well, I'll just leave it up to your department to evaluate because again, it's something that we're bringing, it is kind of new that you're recommending tonight. But maybe next year, you have a year to kind of evaluate. But maybe next year, you have a year to kind of evaluate and decide if there's more need or if there's ways to change it to make it more user-friendly. I just know in the past, there's been some comments about it, but again, let's just test it for the year and and just reevaluate it.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Hi, thank you so much for the the new policy for outdoor spaces. I just have a question about the insurance. I mean, for people who rent the space inside or outside, what is the requirement for those applicants to submit sort of like liability or any kind of insurance that to protect our assets and also keep our city out of trouble?
So for the Adult Recreation Center in particular, for for the Mission Playhouse, typically our clients that come have their own insurance and and so they aren't needing assistance with insurance policy. But for the Adult Recreation Center, since many of those rentals are individual families potentially having a wedding or another event, we do have an opportunity for them to apply to utilize insurance and that's through JPIA, it's through Alliant Insurance. And so we can make that available as well for for these groups if they do not have their own insurance that they can provide.
Thank you.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the the same question actually about insurance, but are we, when we're using our or the JPI, GPA insurance, is it the set fee that they've given us and then we just pass that along or how does that operate?
They actually have varied fees depending on what the event is. For example, at the Playhouse, or pardon me, at the Adult Recreation Center, if a group is, for example, having an event with alcohol, there's a different fee than if they're having an event without alcohol. They also have various fees for use for classes. For example, if it's a more active class.
It's just a set fee, it's a fee schedule.
They have a rate, they have a schedule.
Got it, got it. I did, I think I would be comfortable with like a San Gabriel resident rate. I think we could pretty much set it at the same percentage discount that we're giving for the other venues.
Okay.
I think that for me, I'd be comfortable with that. So I don't think you'd have to come back to us for that, just whatever percentage we give, I'd be fine with that. I'm not, whatever the rest of the council thinks is. I think we could do that without having to go through this again. I'm comfortable with that. And then regarding the use permits, I think it's a good, the temporary use permit, I think it's a good idea since we are requiring, you know, the plan, the site plan and all that. If we at least help residents out with a template, so if we already have the maps done and then they fill in what they want to do.
Sure.
I think that would help on every one of these because I've tried to fill some of these out before and you have to start from scratch and do your own map. And if we, if the city just in general had some maps available of each venue and then that way the residents can just outline what they need. That saves a lot of time here because if it's if it's, you know, it has to be to scale. So if it, we actually have a map that's to scale and then, you know, we have everything already laid out. It's very quick, someone can do this in, you know, thirty minutes, twenty minutes and they're done with it. I know starting from scratch, it took me like an hour and a half, two hours the first time I tried it. So I think that's something we could really improve here. And then also, what was the second part of that? Oh, I lost my train of thought, I'll come back to it.
All right. So. Okay. Okay, that's my, okay, I think the council member Rivera, okay, no, okay. Yeah, just follow up the like the JPI, the insurance they set our fee for us. If just in case I have a claim, is it would be effective our insurance rate or not?
I don't have the answer to that. This is a separate insurance that they provide that essentially is is so that a customer, for example, can can purchase insurance, so I don't believe it would affect.
Okay, so actually like separated called a special event. Usually they call a special event the policy. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, so we, are we asking all the like facility, we're asking their special event liability insurance or just for the Mission Playhouse?
No, we do currently for the Adult Recreation Center as well.
Okay, so.
And that that tends to be the the venue where people may not have insurance on their own because it's, for example, for a private party that they're they're planning an event. So they may not have insurance that they can that they can use that for that, for the special event insurance.
Okay, that's good. At least they have, the city, we can provide the choice, but they can outside the shopping around too, you know? Yeah, okay. And, yeah, and I, yeah, also like the question they're already asking. So we don't have any like a like a dis, either we have, still have the discount for the nonprofit ordination and the resident or we still don't have it?
So the proposal was to include a, there is a discounted fee here for the free community event. So for example, a group that's coming to provide a a free community event that's open, open to the to the public and and available and that is not charging fees or having food trucks or that sort of thing where they're where they're raising fees. And then at the event with paid with paid components, so that that difference is is here. There is, there is a difference for a nonprofit group for the Adult Recreation Center. We have in the fee schedule, a difference for for a nonprofit group.
The still don't have like a resident discount or the or the they have fee or?
Right, we we have not proposed that here. I heard Vice Mayor Harrington here that he'd like to see that here, so.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, like we could, we could have one fee for residents and nonprofits.
Okay, we have.
We could.
Yeah, yes, so maybe we can set up the same fee, but it's for the one, it's a nonprofit or resident, something like that. I based on the rest of the council member agree, you know? So yeah, because the, you know, I do that, have a chance to do that a lot of community event, even through the our neighborhood city. Some neighborhood city, it's really provided, there's some in the city is not provided. It's variable, see which one city it's more, more user, like a resident friendly, they they provide it, it's the resident rate. Yeah. So I hope, yeah, our city maybe can also can follow up that. And another thing is for the map, yeah, I I hope we can provide it. If we already have, because I go to another neighborhood city, they call, they say, hey, you have to do your own map. We go outside and find someone for us that the map, you know how much costs? That's like almost ten years ago, thousand dollars for the, just for the map. They don't, city don't provide it. We're asking the same question, you know, yeah. So I hope our city, yeah, after then, I say, if I live in a city, I cities should be more resident friendly if we already have the map to to provide them, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I have a motion, but I I'm not sure if we've clarified whether we want to have a resident or not. I've heard two people, but and I'm not clear, clear it either, how how much that would mean. You said a percentage, but would you need to bring this back to let us know what that means or?
Uh, so the council will ultimately be reviewing the fee schedule as part of the approval of the the budget fee schedule. So i- if the council was interested in that, we could look at that and bring that as part of the larger fee schedule rather than bringing a separate item back only to have it be reviewed again and then presented. I I would recommend continuing to have the free community event versus the event with paid components because I feel like you, there are a lot of groups that are nonprofits and there are a lot of groups that are nonprofits and would also be willing to charge people for and and have have it be a fundraiser for them.
I don't think that's an issue. I think we agree on that one.
I think it's a different, a different thing. So we could bring that back as part of the larger fee schedule, which it needs to come back anyways as part of that item if that if that was the council's wish.
Say clarify real quick? So what I'm saying is to add like a column to the right of that fee schedule and just add nonprofit and resident and have whatever the reduced fee would be. So all the same categories, they stay exactly the same, you just have one more column. So the left left one is if it's a, so for example, if it's a free community event from a nonprofit or residence, even lower. That's the only difference, so you just add a column.
So we don't have the percentage yet, though, is that something?
Well, I'm saying just make it the same discount that we give on the Grapevine or any of the other rooms for residents.
So so rather than bringing that item back, if the the council will have an item to, or an option, an opportunity to review the ultimate fee schedule and so we can include that as part of the.
Yeah, I don't think we need to see it again, I think we can determine at the time.
At the fee schedule.
I'm comfortable with that.
But we still need some motion tonight, because you're looking for a motion tonight?
Yes.
So the the motion would be add on like just saying any like a nonprofit and a slash.
Resident.
Resident, is that correct? Okay, all right, I'm not a lawyer, but I just want to.
No, it depends on the motion maker whether that's in there.
All right, so the staff, okay. Staff, it's a, staff, it's a combination, so a motion is approve the fee schedule and the policy for use the outdoor space in the Mission District as outlined in the agenda report with the fee to be include in the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-third budget public hearing for council consideration. And I think we need to just add the any like nonprofit in the slash the resident. Do we have, do I have a motion?
A motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right, so the motion made by the council member Wu and the second by council member Rivera.
Did you make it? I hear you, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine, it's fine, yeah, yeah, well, yeah. Oh, yeah, but this this will, it based on the, this, I think, just clarify that as a mayor, I I have right to make a motion too. Okay, but it's fine, we just want things moving forward for our community, okay? Attorney is okay?
Yes, the mayor has the right to make a motion. I think you were calling for a motion.
Yeah, oh, sorry, okay.
But whatever, however you want to play.
That's true. Today is a calling for a motion, yeah. Okay. Thanks, the the.
I'll make the motion if you want.
Okay. So I just say I make a motion, both of them to make it the the second or just one can second?
Well, that's a question, did you make the motion or are you asking for a calling for?
He was calling for a motion.
Maybe, maybe I just put back, just to let the council member Wu make a motion and the council member Rivera the second. It's fine, moving forward, okay? Yeah. Okay. And.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
New business item A, Community Development Department Annual Update. Community Development Director Cervantes will make the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the audience and the public. My name is Aldo Cervantes, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight's presentation is intended to provide the council and the public with an annual update regarding the the department as well as an update on the various projects the department has been working on for the last year. Before I proceed further, I will point out that the presentation has been uploaded to the city website as well as copies are available outside the council chambers. The topics of discussion for this presentation are going to include a glance at the department's structure, provide key performance matrix for the department, discuss housing trends, a summary of the development projects in the last year, economic development programming, as well as conclude with the Q and A. The department is structured by including five divisions. This includes planning, building and safety, economic development, and neighborhood improvement services, which is also known as code enforcement. The department's fifth division is known as administration, which provides admin support for all the divisions. The planning division is responsible for overseeing all the projects from a zoning and land use perspective. Planning is divided into two segments, one known as current planning and the other known as advanced planning. The current planning includes functions of sort of daily short-term projects and managing items such as phone inquiries, managing the public counter, as well as reviewing administrative projects such as accessory dwelling units as well as residential or commercial remodeling type projects. Advanced planning includes long-term projects such as code amendments or zone text amendments as well as general plan updates, such as the housing element update, and any other form of long-range planning policy. Planners also play a key role as project planners or project managers. This includes the management of projects from the initial application period to entitlements such as CUP's invariances, all the way through the inspection process. The building division's primary duty is to ensure the the constant flow of projects through the plan review process, through the permitting process, as well as through the inspection process. This includes a thorough assessment of a project and its compliance with current states, with current California state codes, as well as Americans with Disability Standards and local building standards. The Neighborhood Improvement Services are known as NIS Division. Its primary duties are to, are prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of violations of law, regulating public nuisance cases, public health and safety, business activity, building standards, land use, and all other municipal affairs. The Economic Development Division functions as a liaison between existing local businesses, prospective businesses, developers, and property owners or property managers. From a staffing perspective, the department is almost at full capacity. The department is looking to onboard an additional NIS or or code enforcement officer as well as a part-time aide, as well as a management assistant. In the last seven months, the department has onboarded a few staff members. One includes the assistant planner, a senior planner, economic development manager, an NIS officer. We promoted an NIS officer to a supervisory role as well as a part-time admin assistant. Other functions of the department include the management of various contracts, such as the one that was up tonight, which is a humane society contract. We also manage the tourism and travel programs. Contracts related to wireless facilities that are on city-owned property as well as the Community Development Block Rant Program or CDBG program. In the past year, the department has been very busy managing various projects from small renovations to large-scale mixed-use projects. The key performance matrix for last year include the issuance of fifty-two permits related to accessory dwelling units. Six hundred and forty-six permits were issued for a very specific commercial, mixed-use, and residential-type projects. The total revenue at end of fiscal year for permits are likely to close at approximately one point three million dollars. Planning Division processed about thirty-five applications through the DRC and planning commission process and this does not include the administrative projects such as ADUs renovations that do not require a public hearing. Neighborhood Improvement Services, or NIS, opened approximately six hundred and twenty-six code cases and the division worked extremely hard to close about six hundred and twenty-two of those cases last year. Economic development was primarily focused on two grant programs. The twenty-twenty-one Small Business Grant Program that closed last year resulted in fifty-two recipients of twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollar grants. The latest version, the twenty-twenty-two Small Business Program, which is yet to be concluded, we're close, we're almost at the finish line there, looking to find about fifty-two small businesses. With respect to the housing element or housing trends, I'm happy and proud to report that the city was able to secure state certification of its twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element. As a matter of comparison, only thirteen other. As a matter of comparison, only thirteen other cities in Southern, only thirteen other cities in the SCAG region were able to reach this milestone. And only five cities, including the City of San Gabriel, were able to receive certification prior to the deadline by the state. As a matter of background, the housing element is the only element within a general plan document that requires periodic updates. The state mandates each city updates its housing element either four or eight-year periods. In the case of San Gabriel, we are on the eight-year cycle, given that we received certification by the state. In general, the intent of any housing element is to lay out plans, policies, and objectives that encourage the growth of housing. As part of the state mandate, the Housing and Community Development Agency, or known as HCD, allocated about three thousand and twenty-three housing units for the city of San Gabriel. Through our housing element, we were able to demonstrate to the state through this document that the city can achieve this goal by 2029. And to achieve this goal, the city laid out a plan to increase housing by facilitating the growth of accessory dwelling units, facilitating projects such as the current projects that are seen on Valley and Las Tunas, and by looking at rezoning certain properties in the city to encourage additional housing production. The next step, as it relates to the housing element, is to present to the council a draft inclusionary housing ordinance, which is slated for public review this summer. The goal of the inclusionary housing ordinance is to set specific standards for residential-type projects to include affordable units. So the next few slides will focus on various projects that are under construction or projects that are in the pipeline. To summarize, the department is currently managing about nineteen major projects. These projects include residential projects, mixed-use development, medical office structures, and a hotel. In total, these nineteen projects are looking to provide about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet of commercial space, one hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet of medical office space, and about three thousand seventeen new residential housing units. And so the next slide will, will take a deeper dive into these various projects. So the hotel currently under construction is known as Curio by Hilton. Project site is located at the northwest corner of Del Mar and Valley. When completed, it will provide two hundred and twenty-five rooms, thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial space, and eighty-seven residential units. Based off the website under Hilton, they anticipate a grand opening in the fall of this year. The project has suffered through a few delays, with the largest impact being the high-power lines on Del Mar Avenue. Edison is currently working on undergrounding the power lines, and once completed, the project contractor can begin completing the east side of the building. The mixed-use project known as The One is roughly about sixty percent complete. The project site is located at one oh one East Valley Boulevard. When completed, this project is slated to provide about fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space opportunity, as well as eighty-one residential units. Blossom Market Hall was completed late last year. The food hall opened their doors in December of 2021 and provided thirteen vendors an opportunity to share their diverse culinary offerings with residents of San Gabriel and throughout. Economic Development staff continues to work closely with the property owners to help market the food hall, as well as help fill vacancies when needed. The medical office building located at five oh eight West Las Tunas is currently underway. The existing commercial and residential structures that were there for many years have been demolished recently, which will help pave way for the construction of a mixed-use-type project. And when completed, the project will provide about seventeen thousand square feet of retail space opportunity, a little less than eighty thousand square feet of medical office space. To help with parking on this project, the project looks to include a parking structure that's roughly about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. So the project known as Pacific Square, which is located at seven hundred through eight hundred South San Gabriel Boulevard, just south of the nursery, was approved late last year. Although permits have yet to be issued for this project, staff continues to communicate, as well as work with the developer, to assist in any way possible. The project, when completed, will provide two hundred and forty-three residential units and seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial space opportunity. Within that seventy-six thousand square feet, they will provide about eight thousand square feet of retail, or excuse me, restaurant slash cafe spaces, seven thousand square feet in retail uses, twenty thousand square feet for a market space, and twenty-five thousand square feet for a fitness facility. The developer continues to work with potential tenants, and it appears that the two large spaces could be locked down very soon with potential, with new businesses. One being market, one being fitness. Unfortunately, I can't name the, the businesses at this point. So Mission Valley Plaza, located at seven oh four West Las Tunas, is a project nearing completion. In fact, it's, it's pretty much about ninety-eight percent there. The project is designed to provide, as well as about sixty-three hundred square feet of commercial space. Paris Baguette recently opened their doors. I believe they had a soft opening this weekend, and now they're, they're fully open. Certainly, I encourage you to try. Great pastries, by the way. The other two units are slated for residential, sorry, excuse me, for restaurant uses. I believe the owner is looking for one of the spaces to be a, a high-end type restaurant, and so their efforts are geared towards, towards that kind of a business. The other projects include, that are under construction include the mixed-use sites at eight six zero East Valley, four hundred West Valley, and three hundred East Valley Boulevard. Eight sixty East Valley Boulevard, when completed, will provide about forty-nine residential units and about ninety-two hundred square feet of commercial space. The project located at four hundred West Valley will provide one hundred and twenty-seven residential units and fifty thousand square feet of commercial space. And lastly, three hundred East Valley is looking to provide sixty-eight new residential units and fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. The Rubio Village project located at two oh one South San Gabriel was recently approved by the Planning Commission for a project amendment or modification. The applicant revised the project to add an additional twenty units or twenty residential units to the project. And when completed, this project is slated to provide well over a hundred and fifty new residential units, as well as a little less than seventeen thousand square feet of commercial space. The last highlighted project is known as Elegance at eight two four South Gladys. Once permitted, the senior residential care facility will look to provide about a hundred and ninety-seven rooms with about two hundred and twelve beds. Although the project has been long-approved, in fact, by, by the Planning Commission or through entitlements, the project is, we're waiting for the developer to essentially pull permits for this project. It's just sitting there, waiting for them to sort of secure their, their fees and also their permits. The last we've heard from the developer are they're looking for finance for this project, and so once they get that squared away, the, the hope is that they'll come in and pull permits for the project. From an economic development perspective, staff did conclude, as mentioned, the 2021 CDPG Small Business Assistance Grant Program, which resulted in fifty-two grant recipients. The 2022 Small Business Grant Program that's currently being run now is, is nearing the end. The final steps towards this program will look to, of course, reach out to the recipients to congratulate them for, for achieving this, this, this grant. At this moment, we have vetted the applications. We received about sixty-eight applications. Unfortunately, after vetting them, we've narrowed that down to about fifty-six applications and looking to fund those immediately. Unfortunately, the twelve applications that we could not fund, unfortunately, had code violations, which is a prerequisite for, for denial, as well as one of the, one of the operations that actually closed their doors. And a few others did not report the sales tax. All of these are, are requirements or, or our ability to deny their request because of code violations and other, other factors. The division is also looking to revive the Tourism and Marketing Improvement District to help facilitate the branding and marketing of our hotels on Valley Boulevard. We're looking to revive the board meetings, as well as looking to obtain the services of a consultant to help market and brand those areas as well. Lastly, the division has started its preliminary plannings for the 2022 Dumplings and Beer Events. Our goal with this early start is to lock in vendors. We have about three breweries already locked in and looking to seek sponsorship for the events. At this moment, we're, we've drafted a letter for the mayor and the vice mayor's signatures to go out to local representatives to seek sponsorship for the events. We'll be reaching out to local organizations as well to, to garner support and sponsorship for the event as well. So we're starting a little early this year, so we can, so we can hit the ground running as soon as the, the budget goes, goes live. And so this is a list of the San Gabriel business clusters. Of course, healthcare, tourism and hospitality, food services, and art and history. When it comes to economic development, the goal is to reach out to businesses that look to, to, to complement these various types of, of operations. If not, look to create some different opportunities, but for the most part, looking to complement these business clusters. As of last, to check in with our sales tax consultant, these are the businesses that, that were found to be top sales tax generators. Of course, this list is not in any specific order and is also subject to change as, as quarters change, of course. But I wanted to highlight that these are the businesses that are generating the most sales tax for the city currently. I want to go back. I did miss one piece here on our economic development. Part of the economic development is facilitating the organization of events. We had a meeting with a business owner named Sammy Malouf a little, a few, a couple days ago, or yesterday, in fact. These days are going to kind of mix together. So we're looking to facilitate through, through meetings and through conversations, these special events. We'd also use the temporary use permit application or checklist that, that is before you tonight. We'll look to sort of amend that if we can. But part of the economic development process is we look to create these relationships with our business community to help see these goals of their events come to life. And so part of that process is looking to facilitate sort of these community-type events. And so that's, that's an important thing that I didn't miss that. So to conclude, staff recommends that we receive, the council receive and file this report, and I'm available for questions.
Does any council member have a factual question for staff to clarify for the report? Okay. Council member Wu?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Hi, Aldo. Thank you so much for the presentation. Mike, I have questions. What is the, the parking ratio for the commercial buildings? Like, you have like mixed-use residential and commercial. So for commercial part, what is the parking ratio for now in our city?
It really depends. We have, we have parking ratios that are, that are fixed ratios. We also have parking requirements that are dependent upon the, the location they're in. For example, we have two specific plans in the city, Mission and Valley, and they each have their own parking requirements depending on the type of operation or use, whether it's mixed-use, residential, retail, office, you name it even. Looking to include a, a, a density requirement. And so it's, it's, it's sort of an open-ended question. Unless it's very specific, I can help answer that question. But I, I just don't have that specifically right now. It really depends, is really the answer to the question.
I see. So what about the, the parking? Do we have, each new project, do we require them to have EV charger station?
They're required to what, quote unquote, sub in for, for electric charging stations. They're not required to fully put in the system. They're required to put in all the infrastructure, all the cabling, and all the wires to, for, for future consideration at this point. That's, that is the only requirement at this point, but not to put in the entire system. Now, that can very well change. Our building official recently went to a, what we call a building officials' event, and they're even discussing at this point a code amendment to require the full system be included on a mixed-use type, mixed-use-type project, but that won't take effect until January first of next year.
I see. And on the page, actually, it's on, you indicates that it's pretty clear that you said for the Pacific Square, that they are like eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six square feet for restaurant use and seven thousand something for retail. So this is quite like a very good itemized sample. But other than that, that other property like Rubio Village or any other properties that shows there are certain square footage for the commercial use. So if they are going to use that, the space for restaurant, what is the percentage for the CUP that we will be granting to them? We, it's probably not, we are not granting all the spaces for them to use the, the restaurant use, right?
That's correct. And specifically with Pacific Square, that project was approved by virtue of conditional use permit, as well as an environmental impact report or environmental impact study. That environmental impact study evaluated the impacts of, of traffic, parking, as well as the, the actual impact of, of having this many residential units in this area. With that said, when it came down to the specific numbers in terms of the breakdown of restaurant uses versus cafes versus market spaces and fitness areas, that was all evaluated as part of that process. Now, as approved in this format, that is how we are expecting to see the project be developed. Any changes to that project, for example, changing the, the fitness square footage to a, an additional market, for example, that would require an amendment to go back to actually the city council for consideration. So the expectation is that we see this project in this form be constructed. Anything different would require an amendment.
So that means, for example, the fifteen that you showed, that there are three properties here in the projects under construction. And those commercial area, the spaces, that is still pending. It's not been decided yet, right?
Correct. Absolutely. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Chief of City Club, do we have any public comments?
Sorry.
Debbie Kilgore.
Yes, Debbie Kilgore. Hello. I have questions just about, you just looked at three thousand residents being built here. What's the cost of them? One of the projects that's on, one of the pictures where it says major projects is a condominium built across the street from me. Two bedrooms sold for eight hundred thousand dollars. Three bedrooms, a million dollars. With these three thousand units, how are people with medium income going to afford anything? Where is the price going? And we know another issue is parking. There's no parking. You say forty-nine residents, a hundred and twenty-seven. One of them is two hundred and forty-three units. How many parking spaces? It depends. If there are three bedrooms, you have two parking spaces. A studio, you have one parking space. Where is the parking going to go? And I do know in the past that requirements for parking have been changed. The size have been changed. In restaurants, they've made it instead of having thirty units or thirty parking spots, they've got twenty-six. So is this going to continue changing the parking? Two, where are people going to park? We have a hard enough problem parking my street, this area. There's no parking on the streets anywhere after four o'clock in the afternoon. And there's no always places for people to park. If you have three cars, the new condos have one parking space or two or three cars. Where are they going to park? Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council on this issue?
Okay. It's now time for council deliberation and a discussion. Who would be like this who started? Council member.
I'll start. Thank you, Aldo, for that presentation. I just had some general questions. The first question is, in the past, the Economic Development Department would do this newsletter that would go out to all the businesses and I know council also were recipients. I haven't seen it lately. Is that going to be revised or re, not revised, but brought back? Or are you taking a different approach? Because I, I thought it was very helpful and I know some of the businesses thought it was very helpful. But it was a different time, it was during the pandemic, so it was really some good information. So what is the vision here for that newsletter? I call it a newsletter. I'm not sure what you called it.
No, that's absolutely correct. It's, it's a newsletter. And we did put out a spring edition that unfortunately we did not distribute as, as normal operations. Given the, the change in staffing, I would say. There was a learning curve from my perspective and have, of course, I had to fill that role. And in trying to fill that role, I tried to put out a newsletter, but it didn't get to, to, it didn't reach the distribution that we wanted to. But the goal here is to, to yes, revive it, not to change much of it because it's a good document. And, but the next time around, we'll look to distributing it further out to the community.
Okay. So when you said, who did it go to? I'm sorry.
My understanding is that, that it went to council, number one. And number two, it went to the business community as well as upload it to the city website. The spring edition is on the city website and my understanding, it made it to the city council in terms of a briefing. But it did not reach the business community and that's what we failed to do.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad to hear it's going to be revived. My, my next question is on the inclusionary housing ordinance. I mean, that's been a discussion for three years, at least three years, if not more. And so I was just trying to understand what took so long? Is that because we were trying to finalize a housing element? And therefore, because we did have one, well, several projects that we were hoping to include, but we didn't want the projects to, you know, all of a sudden be put on hold because of this. But what took so long? Can you just briefly explain?
Yeah, the, the consultants were looking for the housing element to be concluded and that was concluded beginning of February this year. As soon as that was concluded, the consultants began to work on the, the analysis portion of the ordinance. Because part of the ordinance is not, it's not a typical ordinance adoption process or drafting process. There's an analysis that goes into an inclusionary housing ordinance that allows for, for example, an evaluation of what is market value, what is rentable value, that sort of thing. And it looks at the demographics of the city. Don't ask me to sort of quote the formulas here, but the, the, the final result is a recommended, a recommended percentage of affordable units for a project that would make sense for the city of San Gabriel. And so that's what took so long to figure out that formula, to figure out what that, that scale is going to be. And based off looking at the rough numbers, we're looking at a scale that will likely reach about 24%. So what that means is that when we come back to council, we'll be looking at discussing what the right percentage of affordable units for these projects is going to be, not going beyond about 20% or so. We can look at going lower than that, but nothing going higher than that. So that level of analysis is what really took the longest. And looking at the schedule moving forward, in July is where we're looking to sort of launch the public outreach program to, to facilitate a comment period.
So we'll be able to define what affordable means because as the person, well, our public commenter, Debbie Kilgore mentioned, a lot of these units are, it's really cost prohibitive. And so this would, would allow some affordability, but even then, what does that mean? You know, what is affordable? 400,000, 600,000, 200,000? It's really difficult. So we'll have those conversations when it's brought back in July.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I did just to ask that I, I did through a, a, throw a challenge to our consultant to look at senior housing as well as part of that process.
Good point.
And so when we're, when we're going to discuss this in terms of trying to figure out what their percentage looks like, we can also discuss a senior component to that and determining whether we want to keep it at the same level of, for example, 20% or looking to make it higher or lower. But as part of the discussion, I wanted to bring that to your attention. That we'll be discussing that as well.
Okay, thank you. I also had regarding, let's see. There's certain projects, you, you have them listed here. But I, I know there's, there's projects, well, it really applies to all of them, that people are curious. I mean, you, you've been very, your department's done a really great job in putting this on the website. But if you're just driving by or walking by, you ask, you know, what is going on here? You know, what is going to take place? And I believe in the past, we used to have those big wooden signs that would say, this is what the project is, is. This is who's developing it. You know, at least some information so people would know. And, but the one that really comes to mind time after time after time is Mission 261 and Pizza Place. Because it just seems like it's completely inactive. And of course, it's right across from Blossom Market, so it's even more pronounced, the fact that there's nothing going on. But I know talking with you in the past, there is something going on. But it would be so helpful just to have something there, you know, something along the lines of this is what it's going to be, you know, a bakery. It, it's, you know, projected is going to open up, you know, in the fall of 2022, whatever that is. But I, I just think it would be helpful. Again, I, I really do appreciate this, these handouts and, and the website, having all these projects listed. But most people don't go there. That's just the reality. And it would be, I think it would be, I mean, when you're talking about community outreach, at least to give that information. I, I know we have our planning commission meetings or design review commissions. I mean, they're looking at these too. But generally, people just, all they do is walk by and say, this is empty. Or, you know, suddenly we have this green tarp around the 261 and we don't know why. Or generally, people don't know why and they're asking, when are they going to open up? So I'm going to give you the opportunity right now to talk to about Mission 261 and, and, well, it used to be to Mission 261. But can you just give us a brief update of what is going on there and when are we going to open that up?
Yeah, it is one of the projects that is on my radar. I pass it almost every day. In fact, I walked up to, to the, the back counter at one point and called the number that was on, on the door. And thankfully, I was able to reach someone and I, I think I got my point across and the fact that they're just taking too long. And as most of you have seen and maybe the public has seen, there's been very little progress on that site. In fact, in my observations, I've seen maybe one worker inside. But I can, I can tell you today that most of the interiors is, is nearing completion. The exterior in terms of landscaping has been cleaned up in terms of the weeds and what have you. So they're making progress, although it's been very slow. They are making progress because I think adding that extra pressure of, of making those calls is sort of helping revive some of these projects. And so that's not ideal to, to be on top of these projects by calling them, but it's what we have to do to get these projects moving forward. But it is moving forward. Unfortunately, I can't say the same for the other project, which is the banquet hall. That's also making very slow progress. And so we have these, these sort of red flag projects that, that we just have to stay on top of to see that they reach their goal.
So you don't have any projections on when they're going to, to open?
In those two specific cases, I don't.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're making the phone calls. Maybe there's ways we can assist to facilitate. Because I, I don't know if this is their first time, you know, with this project. If it is, you know, there might be areas that they just need assistance. They just need support. So, so I'm, I'm glad you're making those phone calls, but boy, we, we need something to happen there.
Right.
The other area, I know at least during the pandemic, there were some workshops that be, that we were hosting. Is that something in the vision of, or did you find them helpful even during the pandemic? Some type of workshop, whether it's financing or, I, I know something that was really popular and I think continues to be popular. This was one of the residuals from the pandemic is the online shopping or purchasing. I mean, that's still strong. I know some businesses say that their online is even stronger than the walk-ins now. But that would be a workshop because not everybody knows how to do that.
Right.
They don't want to pay the high fees. So, you know, are there other options? Is that something in the horizon, some type of workshops? I mean, you, you, I'm sure you've done workshops in your long illustrious career, but what kind of workshops have you seen that are very helpful?
Yeah, the ones that I've seen that were very helpful, especially during the, the start of the pandemic, were marketing type of workshops. And so I held a workshop in my prior career where we provided sort of a one-on-one educational workshop about how to market yourself on social media. And so we, we, we asked for a specialist to join me in that conversation. And we had a Zoom meeting to sort of help educate our local businesses, which was well attended, by the way, to sort of help them in terms of taking their business and putting it on social media. Because most of them were not doing that, especially at the beginning of, of COVID. And so that is certainly a possibility in, in, in the city of San Gabriel. Another idea that I've thrown around with, with business license is looking at a workshop for how to fill out a business license. Because you, you'd be surprised how many don't know that they have to fill one out and also, also needing to turn, or where to turn it in, for example. And so that's another idea. Any workshop that's intended to educate the business community on business matters, fees, social media, marketing process is on the horizon in, in our department.
Because I would recommend, as I mentioned with the Mission Playhouse, I call them tutorials. I've seen like with other cities, they call them like boot camps, you know, social media boot camps, you know, this is what you do. And once you do one and you videotape it, then you can put that on the website and people could always refer back to them.
Right.
So I, I think it's helpful. Everyone could use some assistance. And, and as long as you keep it short and really not very complicated. But also in our community, you would have to do it in different languages too.
Right.
So just to kind of keep that in mind. Well, that's good that you're, that's something you have planned.
And I did attend a Western, Western region Realtors Group presentation. Where I was able to, to provide some of the Realtors there, I think it was about 70 Realtors who are on the, the combination of in-person and also Zoom, provided a very similar presentation and they found that helpful too. So I'm more than happy to do that. Just let me know when and I'll be there.
Great. Yeah, I saw that in the report somewhere. You have here that you're looking at some grant funding for kitchen startups? And so maybe you can explain that a little bit because I know for, for restaurants in particular, even the hall that we're doing here at 261, I know the kitchen is the most expensive.
Right.
It's, it's, it's where most of the investment goes. And that could be a showstopper for a lot of new businesses in, in the food industry. I know also the other, there's some businesses here that I think I've referred you to where they need storage. So they don't need a big space, but they need storage. And I think we've talked about some possibilities of even some properties, you know, being a, what was the word, commissary of some sort or?
Right, a commissary.
Yeah, I think it was commissary, the word that was being used. Is that what you're referring to, storage as well as like the stalls they have at Blossom Market? I mean, that's a great example where it's supporting new businesses. It's, it's small enough and it really kind of jumpstarts if they want to do anything bigger, well, they can, but at least it, it gets them going.
Yeah, what, what, what I was referring to in the report is not so much commissary or ghost kitchens. Although we are after those as well. In fact, we, we did connect a, an existing ghost kitchen, I think called Kitchen United, which is in Pasadena, with a group, a local business owner. And so they're, they're sort of communicating now, of course, about that. But what I was referring to here, similar to the facade improvement program, where we provide funding for a restaurant to sort of build up their kitchen, for example. One of the highest costs for a kitchen is not only the equipment, but a grease trap. And so when you involve a grease trap, which every kitchen needs, especially in commercial, that's the highest cost. And that sort of drives a, a potential restaurant away from a, from a, from coming into the city or really in any city. And so that's what I was referring to is the opportunity of looking at maybe pivoting from facade improvement to a grand program that's aimed towards startup kitchens for a restaurant or a cafe.
So if you would do something like that, you would have to have an application process of some sort? And we would have to determine what the criteria is? Is that what you're envisioning?
Absolutely. This would be something that we'd be looking at next, not next fiscal year, but the fiscal year after next. We need to request funding from the council to in order, in order to, to launch that program. Along with that program, yes, we'll include guidelines, application procedures and looking to develop a funding process.
Okay. Well, that, that's exciting to see. The, let's see. Lastly, there are, we, I mean, we have so many projects here, but there's definite corners and even lots that have been vacant for decades. Some as old as me, which is a long time. And I know what we have difficulty because for a variety of reasons, they don't want to develop, they don't want to sell it. And we have blight, you know, they don't really take care of it. We can give them some violations. They might fix it once and then here we go again. Is there anything or as Sacramento in any way, helping with those particular situations where they just walk away, they're just, just waiting for it to increase in price? But there's no activity and there hasn't been any activity for decades. Is there anything we can do with those?
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the economic development process is you, you look to build those relationships with the property owners to sort of help facilitate some activity for the property. In, in most cases, you just have no option but to, to take what you get. We do have methods of code enforcement to help deal with, with blight or public nuisance issues, overgrown landscaping and sort of that sort of issue. But you, you sort of, you certainly can't force these property owners to develop their sites. But you can help facilitate by, you know, you know, extending your arm and saying like, I'm here to help you. And here's some opportunities, here's the code. By the way, you're in a specific plan that helps sort of relieve some of the parking requirements or, or potentially allow for additional uses. And so having those conversations, you'd be surprised how that can entice a property owner with a vacant site to sort of help develop that site.
Yeah, because the ones I'm thinking of are completely vacant. And they don't seem to have an interest in even creating parking. I mean, that would, that's a great idea, at least create some parking. And I'm just talking about one level, not talking about doing a, a parking structure, but just something. One, one particular corner is just so valuable and there's so much that we could do with that corner because it has so much traffic going back and forth. It's a prime location. And nothing is being done except that green tarp, you know? And you know, that means long-term it's going to stay that way. So, you know.
Is that Del Mar on Los Tunas?
Yeah. And so, so.
Without sharing too much, there's something.
Oh, good. Okay, okay. That one hasn't been, is not as old as me. That one hasn't been that long, but.
But there's something very exciting, there's something very exciting happening.
Oh, good. Oh, good. That's good to hear. But there's another one down the street that's been there forever and ever. But, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know, the, the economic development team has not lost hope and is continuing to hopefully encourage, pursue something. Even if they would just donate the property to just any group, but which I doubt, I know it won't, it won't happen. But, but, but thank you for that.
And one of the, if I may add, one of the things that we do differently here and that's something that I, I brought here was reaching out to brokers and reaching out to real estate agents. Because you'd be surprised how many brokers will tell you, well, I'm surprised I'm even getting this call from a city official. Most of them don't get calls from city officials to help facilitate project improvement or, or facilitate a project in general. So it's, it's our team looking at reaching out to those brokers. And we put our tools, we have tools now in place that allow for us to find where they are, to call them to help facilitate conversations for future projects at these sites. And so that's something that's different and we're happy to help in any way that we can.
Well, thank you for your time and for the information. It's very, very helpful.
Council member, Riviera.
Well, Denise kind of already asked what I was thinking about business attraction, you know, like just attractive businesses. Like she mentioned, there's some lots that have been empty for a long, long time. Is there anything other than reaching out to them? I don't, I'm not too familiar with real estate or anything like that. But, you know, you have, you've had it for 10 years. There's nothing being done. I mean, can the city enforce something, do something, you know, to, to have them do something with the lots that are just sitting there or we, there's just nothing we can do?
Other than those conversations of, of trying to entice them to do something, there's not much we can do. We can certainly act on a code enforcement process if there's an abatement that's needed. But we can't certainly force them to develop their properties. And so all we can do is, is reach out, share with them what the codes would allow. And hopefully that triggers some. that triggers some, some interest. Most of the time, some of these developers are looking at feasibility studies and just don't see that it's either the right market or the right-sized lot to develop a very specific use. And so that certainly holds back developers in developing a certain product. And so that's what we found in these conversations that we've been having.
Do we make connections with like, let's say, the property owners and maybe like a grocery store? Do we bring those connections together and?
Absolutely.
Sit down with them?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mentioned about one of the tools that we just, we just purchased. It allows for us to find these brokers, it allows for us to find these retailers that are looking to expand, to find their representative brokers and to connect them with all of these development projects. That way we can help facilitate, you know, moving a grocery chain, for example, at the Pacific Square Project, even though I think they're taken care of by themselves, but, but we, we have the tools necessary to help have that great communication process.
Okay, because it just seems like we have a lot of office and commercial spaces and all this stuff and not enough businesses actually that, you know, that want to come to the city. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Right. So Nont, I just asking to the project, maybe I think we approved it. When is for the, what's going on for the self-storage on the San Gabriel?
Yes, that project is close to permitting, I would say, but it is moving forward.
Okay, because that when, when you do the presentation, a lot of people interested in their art exhibition, they, they interested in that too, you know? They, the first of all, they have an art exhibition, so a lot, you know, so whether they're asking you when they can start the construction, okay? And another one, it's for the Rubio Ridge. That's, I, I saw they are, grand open, I said, three years ago, but the looks like right now still don't have any construction yet.
Yeah, that, that project was approved back in, at least a lot of the documents that I've noticed, 2006 or so. And so a few, a few years after that, the project was approved in some various form. Unfortunately, the project, they go through a, a number of changing of hands in terms of sale. In fact, it's for sale now. But we've been in communication with the property owner as well as a developer and their architects and they are focused on building this project. They did go back to the planning commission recently to request a modification. The planning commission did demand that they build this project. And so all indications that this project is going to move forward and that the, the owner is, is eager to get this done.
Okay. So yeah, that's your answer to my question because they asking more unit. So we definitely want them, really want to build it or not?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So they, they promise they will be built or not?
Not that they promise, but they are eager to move forward.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. So if no, okay, this, this item is a no vote. So thank you the, out of the, to the presentation. Yeah, one thing is like, I know the, because the, when you get on board, we several, the, the staff, it's, they have a different opportunity. It's more, so if you need a help, because I know the, they call the, at the heart, okay, that time and I have the, the Dominica, Amelie, Dominica and Claudia plus the previous, the Mayor Liao and the myself, that we have the, like the monthly meeting together, but I think the only me left here. So I really wanted to help you to, 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 to the discount transition. If you, you need a help, let, let me know.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. But it's still good because when you can, you know, just yourself, you did a good job to, to write out the, the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item, please.
Donation of Hernando Villa's The Pioneer's Mural to the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art. City Manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll make this as quick as possible. To give you just a bit of background before we go through the item, the city received the donation of a mural from a Mexican-American artist by the name of Hernando Gonzalo Villa. As near as we can tell, we received the mural as a donation from the family of, of Mr. Villa because the mural depicts an image of the San Gabriel Mission. And we received it in the early 2000s. Just for some background purposes, the mural is about 12 feet by 13 feet, so it's, it's very large. It would take up, you know, the, the back wall of, of that wall just for scale between the, the two doors. It has been in storage since the early 2000s and the idea behind storing it for that long was when the new police station building that was proposed was going to be built, it was to have a two-story lobby. And so this mural was going to be the centerpiece of that lobby. But since that police facility is on hold for the foreseeable future, we started looking at other options because of the fact that we have to pay a storage fee to store that. We can't just roll it up and put it in one of our closets. It's actually at a storage facility in Orange County so that it doesn't degrade or deteriorate any further than it already has. Over the years, we've spent more than $10,000 storing that and it's not being able to be seen by the public, which is also a, a bit of a shame. So we reached out to all of our local groups to see, or several of our local groups to see if anybody had an interest or an ability to store it or, or not to store it, excuse me, but to display it and put it to use. We talked to the mission because of it having the mission, as you can see in the back, but the mission was not able to, to have it. And we reached out to the Historical Society and several other groups. I am checking whether we reached out to the Ramona Museum. I believe we did, but I've not heard back yet whether we have or not. That was about a year ago that we did that reach out and when I hear back from Mr. Clair, I'll let the council know. One of the issues is, and I'll show, you'll see it on the next slide, you can kind of see it in this slide below the horse in a diagonal line. When it was stored, this picture shows some of the beautiful color that isn't present in that, that first image. The, the, there's the, a line that you can see, three of them across the, the whole canvas that shows the damage that's been done. But one of the problems with the, the mural is that it's going to require more than $30,000 of restoration work in order to preserve it and display it. I asked, I paid an appraiser for an opinion of value. It came back at around $30,000. So wanted to make sure I knew what we were holding and what it was worth. And so after hearing back from our groups and hearing that nobody had the ability to take it, I happened to read an article in the paper that George Lucas was funding a museum and exposition park called the Lucas Museum of Narrative Arts. And from the description in the LA Times article, it seemed like this was something that they would be looking for. And so I reached out on a whim to the museum and they contacted me very quickly and said that in fact, Mr. Villa was one of the artists that they had not had yet, but they were looking for it. It was basically a hole in their collection. And so over the last year or so, I've been going back and forth with representatives from the museum. And a couple of months ago, they came back and said, we would love it and we would love to take it as a donation. They can't pay for it because of the amount of restoration work that needs to happen, but they would display it. In return for displaying it and for the donation, anytime it was displayed, it would have a sign that commemorates it as a gift from the, whatever we want to call it, either the City of San Gabriel or the residents of the City of San Gabriel. The thing I like the most, in addition to the way that they're going to display it, it'll be part of other murals and art from that era and it will also tell the story of Mexican-American artists at the time, but more importantly, some of the images that you see where indigenous peoples are not depicted in a, a manner that is what we would like them to be depicted. It'll talk about that story, which is, I think, something that is a benefit to the community. I've asked members of the, the museum to come and I'll have Alex from the museum give a couple of words on that. This is a picture, please, Alex, if you can step forward. This is a picture of the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art. You can see just for purposes of wayfinding, that's the Coliseum in the background. This is a rendering of how that was to be. And I've got a couple of pictures while you're talking, Alex, if you could take it away.
Thank you, Mark, and I'm Alex Capriot. I'm the Director of Communications and Marketing with the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art and I'm really happy to be with you tonight. And Mark, you took a lot of my talking points, but I'm just going to give you, I don't know how familiar, familiar you all are with the Lucas Museum, so I'll just give you a little bit of an overview, but we're the first museum to focus exclusively on storytelling through images. We operate on the belief that visual storytelling can connect people and help shape a more just society. Our growing collection encompasses artworks from across cultures, places, times, mediums, and includes everything from paintings to sculptures, comic art, murals, photography, the art of filmmaking, illustrations, and a lot more. We're founded by George Lucas and his wife Melody Hobson and led by our Director and CEO Sandra Jackson Dumont, who is the former Chairman of Education at the Metropolitan Museum. We broke ground in 2018 in Expo Park, right next to the Coliseum Natural History Museum. And if you haven't driven by recently, please do. It is quite a structure. It's a 300,000 square foot museum on an 11-acre campus. It's five stories. It's going to be embraced by this gorgeous green park space designed by Studio MLA. The building's designed by Ma Yan Song of MAD Architects out of China. And the interior of the building is going to feature expansive galleries, two state-of-the-art theaters that you can kind of see in the wood paneling back there, and numerous dedicated spaces for learning, engagement, dining, retail, and events too. We're really thrilled that the City of San Gabriel is considering donating this mural to the Lucas Museum. This donation would make accessible to the public a really important work of art about the City of San Gabriel and the region more broadly. Villa's mural, mural would enter a museum collection with a focus on muralism, particularly mural histories of Southern California. Through this donation, the museum can connect Villa's work to Chicano muralists such as Judy Baca, who's archived for the Great Wall of Los Angeles, which is one of LA's most famous murals, of course, is part of the museum's collection. I think that's what you, the story that you're referencing that you saw in the LA Times last year. The museum also owns and continues to pursue other murals and mural studies with a particular interest in works by Mexican-American and Chicano muralists. Education and accessibility are the core of the Lucas Museum. And in addition to the mural being on view as part of rotating exhibitions at the museum in the future, it will also be accessible to students and scholars through the museum's future digital portals and leveraged, of course, for other educational and programmatic purposes too. Our education team was very excited when they saw this mural, as you mentioned, Mark, to incorporating kind of the history and stories told and the, the visuals of this mural into our programming to look at the history of the mission system, the treatment of indigenous peoples, and, you know, the impact of that on our native communities. Whenever the work would be exhibited or engaged with through programming, we would, of course, credit it as you, as you all would like to. We're, we thank the council and the people of San Gabriel for your consideration of this gift and thank you, Mark, for contacting us as well.
Thank you, Alex. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and Alex would too. The recommended, recommended action is to approve the donation of the mural to the Lucas Museum. And when the museum was, would be open and the mural would be displayed, we'd all be invited to whatever the ceremony is in, in at that time, so we can see it in its final resting place, so to speak.
Okay. Does any council member have the factual question for staff to clarify the report? Council member Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Ning. Just to reaffirm that once we donate this piece, beautiful piece, that the City of San Gabriel names will be displayed next to this art.
That's correct.
Council member Rivera.
No, you mentioned that when it, when it is displayed, so it wouldn't be displayed all the time. It would just be like certain months, seasons.
That's correct. I mean, we'll have a rotating exhibition schedule within the museums. It's 100,000 square feet of gallery space, so it'll, things will be changing constantly within the museum. Nothing will be kind of permanently in any space.
I have some questions, but after public comment.
Chief, do we have any, any public comments?
I have no comment cards. Is there anyone wishing to address council? No comment, Mayor.
Okay. It's now time for the council member deliberation and the discussion. So council member Menchaca.
Yes. Well, first of all, being a USC alum, this is very exciting to have this. And I'm, and thank you for explaining about the museum because when people think of George Lucas, all they think about is Star Wars and, you know, may the force be with San Gabriel here because this is so exciting. It's, it's a $1 billion project, middle of LA. It's going to be a, a global destination, actually. I read something about maybe Frida being there. You have some work from?
We did. We acquired a gorgeous Frida Kahlo portrait last year.
Yeah, so that's, that's exciting too. And I just think it's, it, it's the proper home and I think it's, it's wonderful that our city will be recognized in perpetuity, even though you're going to be rotating it, but, and, and the fact that it needs to be restored and preserved, I think is just, it's just wonderful that that's the type of work that George Lucas is doing, not just filmmaking, but it's a donation. He's providing this for the City of LA. Just the generosity is, is pretty tremendous, him and his wife, not just him, but his wife also. So I, you know, definitely would love to make the motion to be right next to USC and the Coliseum, but I'll wait to see if there's any other questions.
Just wait, maybe. Okay. Council member Rivera, you have more question? Okay. Okay. So, yeah, it's, I thanks the, the Mark and Alex to make this happen. For me, it's, it's also exciting to see the, the, this mural can go to the Lucas Museum. And the important, I think I wanted to clear it also hopefully for the history because our City of Mission, so we are like, every year we have a celebration, like AOE, the founding place in our City of San Gabriel, right? So maybe can use the, this, the mural, we can tie the, this kind of event, right? Every time, every year or so, or even for the kids, student, right? Can know, yeah. So we are, yeah, we are like, it's, the City of, City of Los Angeles looks like it's, it's a large city, you know, but our looks, the, the City of San Gabriel is a small city, but we connect together. We're built like community to understand each other. Also have to use this opportunity to learn our historical. Yeah, okay. So then I.
I'll make the motion.
I second it.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'll make, well, let me verbalize it for our attorney's sake, I guess. Make the motion to approve the donation of the Villa's The Pioneer Mural to the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art.
Okay. So the motion made by council member Menchaca and seconded by Mayor Ping. So you need a vote? Right, okay.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
So have any, next item?
Public comment. If there's anyone wishing to address the council at this time, please give your speaker's request card to the clerk. No comment, Mayor.
Okay. City manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
And the council member in the conference meeting report? Okay. Council member Menchaca.
I'll try to be brief. First of all, Cinco de Mayo, great turnout. Again, kudos to Rebecca and her team. They did it themselves, wouldn't hire an agency to coordinate, they did everything themselves. So thank you for bringing that in-house. I think the one feedback I got is they, community members want this every single weekend, which is obviously cost prohibitive, not sustainable, but it just tells you that there's excitement and people want to come to our city, stay in our city and play in our city. So, but what I was thinking is perhaps, you know, I know there's a litmus test of some sort, but we do. but we do have lots of activities. Not all of them are planned by the city, but some of them are opened to the community. I don't know if there's something we can do to share that with our residents that, you know, maybe it's not being hosted by us, but it is taking place at the Mission Playhouse or at the Adult Recreation Center or at the Arboretum, I mean, not there, the Grapevine, I'm sorry. Arbor, it's just a suggestion, but people are, seem to be, have an appetite for coming out and just staying in our city, walking down to the Mission District. And I know Blossom Market, they have something every, all, every weekend, whether it's a comedy, or it's a painting, or concerts, which is also exciting. But that was just the only suggestion I had. And then I also wanted to compliment Chief Wallace and his team for Fire Service Day. We were all there. The whole council was there. They had 1,200 hot dogs, and it was hot. It was really hot. So I applaud all of you for being out there, you know, cooking and then doing these demonstrations that included fire out there, too. So you had the heat, and then you had all this fire taking place. But people were just having such a great time. It was just that old-fashioned kind of family-friendly event that you really don't see as often. And I think, just kudos to your department. As one of the individuals said here earlier, Sue, during public comment, it was just a really great event. I also wanted to ask that the Fire Department, as Sue mentioned, if you can give us some more information about the CERT program, you know, how long it is, when it takes place, if it's going to be done in different languages or just one language. But, you know, I would love to participate, but it depends on, obviously, what days. Don't make them on Tuesdays, of course, because that means we can't attend. But I think that was a very good point, that more of us need to be educated and be ready for a disaster because it will happen. And that was all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, yeah. Thanks to Councilmember Menchenka, I already covered everything. Okay, for our last.
Like always.
It's the community event, yeah. It's really, yeah, I still use this opportunity, like, we city, through the communities, community service, to the, like, Cinco de Mayo, and also the Fire Department, to the, yeah. I have a chance to attend the Fire Service Day. It's great. It's turnout is great, too. And also thanks all the, our colleague, the council member, we have five council members that attended this event. So, yeah, so we're also learning something, too. So, okay, that's my report. And, okay. Today, actually, continue, we don't have the closing session, none, right? But we will be continue to the, I still need a meeting adjourned or?
We don't have a closed session for this meeting, but we will be continuing the adjourned special meeting that we started before this meeting.
Okay.
Right after this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, so, so should be, the regular meeting is adjourned. Okay, the next regular, the city council meeting will be, hold on, the Tuesday, June 7, 2022, at 6:30 PM. For the regular meeting, meeting adjourned, but we still continue to have the previous special meeting, the session, too. Okay. So we, can, I suggest give to us the house break. 10 minutes?